Call this city council meeting to order. The day is Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Time is five thirty P M. We're gonna have a prayer by our own Councilman, Robert Swenson.
Ask everyone to please stand. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence here this evening as we discuss the city of business for the city of Kinston. Lord, we ask that you touch everyone's heart. Please let us make the right decisions going forward, that we can continue to have a unit, unified community, Lord. Bless all that are sick and shut in, bless the ones that have experienced trauma in their lives. We ask that you continue to lead us and guide us in your direction, in your name we pray. Amen.
Please, please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
The Honorable Mayor Don Hardy will not be with us tonight for this city council meeting, as he is currently attending the National League of Cities Summer Board and Leadership Conference. He is presently the City, the City of Kinston Road as the Vice Chair of that board. And also, our Councilwoman, Ms. Solomon, is not here. And she is unable to attend due to attending the North County Public School Annual Planning Retreat. So just to let everybody know. At this time, we're gonna have a comment from our own Councilwoman, Councilman Suggs. Oh wait, oh wait a minute. As you were, roll call.
Councilmember Swenson?
Here.
Councilmember Suggs. Councilmember C four, present, and Mayor Pro Tim Hardy.
Present. All present and all accounted for.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Hardy, thank you for the, I just wanted to say a few words before we go into citizen comment. I know we have a few more people than usual here in the room tonight. I appreciate you all showing up. But I wanted to provide some additional clarity on the citizen comment process. Because I know as someone who's come to city council meetings before I was on the board, then even as a city council member, I've experienced the frustration, I've seen the frustration when sometimes folks come to citizen comment and they don't get an immediate response to their concern. That's not how the citizen comment portion of our meeting or pretty much any meeting for municipality across North Carolina is set up. It's an opportunity for you citizens to come and state your concern, your complaint, your idea, your feedback. And then we as council members, we receive that feedback, our staff receive that feedback. And then if you request for somebody to follow up with you, or you state something that we need some additional information about, we will follow up with you after the meeting if you share your contact information. But this is not the forum for dialogue. You, you never see us really engaging back and forth or answering questions or responding to things immediately. That's not how it's designed in, in Kinston or pretty much for any other city in North Carolina. So I wanted to provide that clarity for everyone tonight. To that point, I do want to encourage everyone to stay for the entire meeting if possible, stay to the end. Because if we need some additional contact information from you, allow one of us from the council, one of our staff members to be able to reach you and get, get your phone number, figure out how to follow up with you. So I do want to encourage people to stay to the end because sometimes people will come and state their concern and then leave before we can get your contact information. So please stay if possible so that we can address your concern at the end. Sometimes council members will at the end, when we make our reports at the end of the meeting, we may follow up and respond to your concern or say something more broadly about the issue at the end of the meeting. So it's always good to stay for the entirety of the meeting. The last thing I wanted to share with everyone, because I do understand that there are several of you here who are here because you're concerned or you're frustrated regarding the video that has been circulated in the past few days regarding the use of force incident that took place on Sunday evening. I've heard from quite a few community members that they want to hear from the mayor or the city council. I can't speak for every council member, but whenever a citizen or news reporter has reached out to me, I've shared with them that I typically do not comment on these situations out of respect for due process and the legal responsibilities that come with our role of being on the city council. Until I've had an opportunity to review all the facts and an investigation has been completed and I know that my comment won't cause more harm to good, you typically won't get much of a response aside from that out of me. And the reason being, if I speak up too soon, if I say something, if any of us say something that can potentially, you know, cloud the investigation, that can potentially say that we're calling for a specific disciplinary action for one of our city employees before that investigation's been completed, it could put the city of Kinston in a situation where now there's litigation, that employee can say that their due process rights weren't followed through and provided for, and that investigation gets thrown out and somebody can try to sue the city and now your taxpayer funds are going towards a lengthy litigation lawsuit. So if you're wondering why you have not heard from me or why you haven't heard from maybe some other members of the council, that is typically the reason why. We want to make sure that we're doing our legal responsibilities as a city council, but also that we're also providing an opportunity for our employees and the public to enjoy the benefits of due process. Sometimes that takes a little while. Sometimes it's frustrating not getting to hear all the information. But I do encourage some patience with us, at least because of the legal responsibilities of our role. I do appreciate people coming and sharing their concerns. And I do hope and I believe that all of us are open to that feedback. But that is why you won't typically hear city council members responding to comments or concerns about personnel issues. Because at the end of the day, in our context as a city council, these are personnel matters. And if we get involved in that, it can cause some potential litigation issues or a lack of due process. And now your funds, your taxpayer dollars are being spent in an area that we know they don't need to be spent in. So thank you, Mr. Hardy, for allowing me to share that with everyone.
With that said, citizen comment.
Mayor Pro Tim, before you get there, Councilman Solomon texts and says she can't hear us. So I don't know who went to check to make sure that we're being pro, we're live and clear for everybody in the audience and at home watching the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Citizen comment. Citizens must sign up before the start of the meeting if they wish to address the city council. Citizens should state their name and address before beginning their comments and may speak up to a maximum of three minutes. Citizens speaking, seeking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by a member of the governing body or by appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk, are there any?
Yes, sir. It is our policy that if there is a group, we, or we ask that you select a spokesperson and that spokesperson will have five minutes to speak. So I see that, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Cox, I think this is Bergman, well, not Bergman, but Wayne B. La Crystal Brown. I beg your pardon? Okay, so you are not a part of a group? Okay, I'm fine with that. However, whoever and whenever you come to the podium, I do ask that you give me a physical address as, as Mr. Hardy just asked for. All I see here is a, a city and state. So I would need a, a full address if at all possible. The first name would be Richard Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, come over to the podium over there.
Good evening. I am Richard Taylor, ten sixteen Taylor Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina. Peace and blessings, all praises to the most I got. I am here in regards, of course, to that video that we have seen. I spoke at length with Mr. Hardy about it. And this is my second time here. Last year was Khalil Branch, if I'm not mistaken. Couple of years back, it was David Bruton. So there seems to be a pattern of this type of police cowardice to attack that young man like that. And I put emphasis on the word cowardice. Anybody can look at that video and see the wrong in that. And I understand you, Mr. Suggs, and your position, but I'm tired of politicians hiding behind due process and investigation. You're protecting the city more than you are protecting that young man who was brutally beaten on the ground. He was not a suspect in any of the case. I have the police reports and they're saying that they attempted to arrest him and he pulled away. The question is, what was he being arrested for? The communicating threats came after he was beaten by the police. So once again, I feel that is an act of cowardice. And you being a majority black leadership, I think that reflects partly on you for not willing to speak up, jeopardizing the city, your positions, or what have you. We have come too far, we waited too long for you guys to not stand on anything. Investigation aside, anybody with two eyes can see what's wrong with that video. And Khalil Branch and David Bruton, who I talked to yesterday. But they always trump up these charges to justify their behavior. And I spoke to Sergeant Biggins, Sergeant Biggett, who hung up the phone on me when I was literally asking justified questions about why this young man was arrested. And so that further lets me know that there is a culture of disregard for the health and the wealth and the well-being of black community in Kinston, North Carolina. And for you guys to continue to allow that, once again, why are you up there? If you are not gonna stand for justice, righteousness, and truth? We all know that the police investigate themselves. And when they investigate themselves, what are they gonna do? They're gonna find themselves justified. And so you guys are in a position to attack that, to, to dissuade that, to speak out against that. But by your silence is complicitness. As Martin Luther King said, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. And evil persists when good people remain silent. And so you guys sit up there in a position of goodness, but you're still silent.
Ms. Resita, Resita Cox?
Hey, y'all. I'm Resita Cox. You may remember me. I'm the Emmy Award-winning film director behind the Sundance and PBS-supported film Basketball Heaven. Despite pitching my film's community engagement campaign to you, which was half a million dollars of my own money, I received no outreach from you guys. I believe arts program is a part of an ecosystem of safety that could have prevented current issues. While I previously sought collaboration, I'm now here because of the tragic beating of Cameron Williams. I want to give a shout out to our community for finally showing up. Our advocacy will go beyond Facebook this time. Why? Because I will personally not stand by and sit comfortably at home while you murder black children. Kinston Police Department has gone unchecked for far too long. I ask, if we are spending almost seven million dollars in Kinston Police Department each year and every year they seem to receive a raise, why do we still have so much crime and violence in our town? The answer, because policing has never been proving to reduce crime and violence. It only escalates it. This is a fact, this is not my opinion. Effectively combating crime and violence requires addressing community needs and investing in social services, life-affirming programs. Traditional strategies have failed us. Crime is high in Kinston and so is the police budget. What does that mean? That means they not doing their job. Kinston Police Department, it's time for a demotion. Policing by its nature is reactive and responsive to crime. They show up after the crime has already been committed. It is not a proactive response to crime. The only way to address crime and violence, it has been proven, is by addressing issues at their root. We need to give our community what they need. There are children who can't eat. There are mothers who can't give their kids lunch money. All of the kids at Kinston High are on the free lunch program. But we giving six million dollars a year to a police force that is beating black children for walking down the street? Are y'all serious? Are y'all serious? Half of y'all are black. Are y'all serious right now? I'm gonna show up here every time y'all meet until some of that money is reallocated. We got a homeless shelter. There are homeless people in the streets. We have a mental health crisis. You can put that money to our social services. There are so many places. I came here with a twelve-page PowerPoint with all of the ways you can invest in our young people and yet I am back because no one called me, but because I saw a video of a young man seizing under a grown man's body.
Ms. Cox, may I ask you for a full address?
Six twenty-eighth Road.
Thank you. I'm not certain of the first name, but I think it's Bergman.
Good evening.
Hi.
Janie L. Bergman.
Okay.
Seven thirteen Barkne Avenue, Kinston, North Carolina. First and foremost, I want to say that I'm not here to attack anyone. I have children. I have a black son who grew up in Kinston. And when I saw the video, just came back from Washington, D.C., and someone shared the video with me, I cried because that could have been my son. All I want to say, we have to work together as humans, not racist, but as humans. I don't want anything to happen to anybody's child that I wouldn't want to happen to my child. When I saw that child laying on the ground having a seizure and no one, absolutely no one, didn't get up, didn't try to do anything, that could have been my child. And I don't know him, don't know anything about him, but I had to come to say enough is enough. I understand your positions, but you have to understand us as parents, as black parents, who's doing everything we can possibly to raise good kids. We need programs. We need outreach programs that will help build bridges for all of us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Ricky Hooker? Oh, no. Okay. It would be Edward Brown? Am I, am I mispronouncing that first name? Okay, I have a Wayne B. I beg your pardon? Okay. La Crystal, is this Brown? I'm sorry. Okay, I see, Darrell, I think this is. If you wrote your name on this paper and I am not pronouncing it correctly, please correct me. And it's just because of the legibility of your writing. And then the last one I have is Q for Quala Blackwell. And your address, Ms. Blackwell, I'll need as well. I beg your pardon?
Good evening, y'all.
Hello.
I'm gonna ask a question first. Because the last time I was here, one point seventeen minutes, our elected mayor decided he wanted to rule him, interrupt me. What is the timeframe a person have up here when they come to make these citizen comments? Three minutes, okay. The next question I would ask is, why was I interrupted at one minute and seventeen seconds at this last meeting? If this is where we're supposed to come and express our concerns? Neither one of you stopped the mayor when he tried to stop me? And if we got three minutes? I went back and looked at that video several times at one point seventeen seconds. One minute, seventeen seconds. Because he got tired of hearing me, you guys allowed him to attempt to run me away. Y'all don't know when that gonna happen, no way. Because I knew it was three minutes. If we stand for nothing, we fall for anything. And we falling for everything right now. But that was my first concern. My next thing is standing on behalf of most of the citizens in, in this city. Have you guys looked at that budget I asked you guys to look at last time? Have you seen all the discrepancies from the beginning to the end? When our city manager, Rhonda Barick, says that the budget was fifty-three million and she increased it to fifty-six? Show me an increase from fifty-three to fifty-six. I mean, a decrease. She said she decreased it from fifty-three to fifty-six. How is that a decrease? The budget opened up with a line. Because fifty-three is not a decrease to fifty-six. So you guys need to look at that. The next thing, that's six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. What is, how, how, how can we be cool with spending that on the police department? These people got on defund the police shirts. We're calling for no funding. But we've given them one point two million dollars just for this year alone. Five hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is another misleading thing in the budget. Because we say we're giving them five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to replace ten cars that are aging when there's in fact fourteen being replaced and very few of them have those hundred and forty-four thousand miles that you guys say you're replacing them for. One of them is even twenty thousand miles that was totaled. If this is what we're replacing, tell us. Don't tell us we're replacing ten and then put fourteen down in the budget that don't match what you guys are saying that we're doing it for. Another problem. How many of us in here got a twenty twenty-five or a twenty twenty-six? We replacing them with twenty twenty-fives and twenty twenty-sixes that terrorize us with. Because that's what they do. I live on Chestnut Street, by the way. My address ain't like none of y'all's. I live in the hood and I get to see what go on in the hood. And it ain't good. Martin Luther King up there by all the projects, wherever there's a project there, that's where they at. Instead of on Heritage Street where they drinking like fish, driving like ain't the mall. Oh, I happened to see the police that quit. He got caught drinking and driving. It's minimal him. But we letting them get away with anything. My last thing is, we are asking you guys, so we, I was told by the city manager, Rhonda Barick, that y'all amended, y'all, she didn't recommend for y'all to get that raise. I was told that the mayor amended the budget and gave that raise. So we asking you guys to do the same thing y'all did to get y'all raised, to relocate that six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars y'all done gave to the police. We don't care nothing about nobody counts. It's our money. Ask us how we want to spend it. Don't just take it upon y'allself to go in no room and decide how y'all gonna spend the taxpayers' money.
Adoption of the agenda. If any council member wishes to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before the adoption of the agenda. Are there any?
Four and five off the agenda.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect. Item four and five be taken off the agenda. Thank you, Councilman Swenson. With that said, entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on June the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider adoption of a resolution to close and abandon a portion of the North Davis Street right-of-way located between Tower Hill Road and East Blunt Street. Stephen Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hardy. We started talking about the stretch of right-of-way between Blunt Street and Tower Hill Road back in the beginning of May. We had a request from two property owners on each side of a portion of that right-of-way to ask to have that right-of-way abandoned. They were interested in taking over that area and being able to use that for their uses with their properties that they have on each side. The properties on each side, one is owned by Michael Sousa at five-ten Tower Hill Road and the other is owned by a church, Pastor Kim Powell, at four-twenty-two East North Street. I have a map of the area that's proposed to be abandoned. Initially, we looked at abandoning the entire block between the two streets that cross the North Davis Street right-of-way. The property owners that are on the North Street side, they're on the, on the, on the Blunt Street side, we're not interested. So we reduced the amount that we were looking to abandon to just the portion between the church and Mr. Sousa. So that is what is proposed to be abandoned. We are working through the process that's required by the general statutes for the abandonment, which is the same as for closing a street. We had to adopt a resolution of intent to close that, which you took care of. We published the resolution for four weeks in the local newspaper. That's been completed. We sent a copy of the resolution to the property owners on each side of the area being abandoned and posted the notice of the closing and the hearing at the right-of-way so anybody in the public that goes through that area could see the notice. So tonight, we're near the end of the process. We need a hold-up public hearing to gather any public comment for or against the actions we are proposing. And then council can consider whether or not to adopt a resolution to actually close the right-of-way. So the order's included in your agenda. I put the map on the street, on the screen, so anybody that wishes to comment can see what area we're talking about. So that's all I have, unless you have questions, then we'll be ready to open the public hearing.
Anything from the council?
Just wanna, before you move on, thank you for working on this. I know one of the gentlemen in the neighborhood who'd been advocating for this and it is a constant issue. So I do appreciate us going ahead and move swiftly. I think the property owners nearby will all appreciate it. So thank you, Mr. Steve.
Anything further from the council? If not, then we're gonna go into a public hearing. Mr. Turner, you like to entertain? We are now in a public hearing. There would be any attitude to speak in favor of or opposition of? Anybody to speak in favor of or opposition of? Anything further from the council? The public hearing is now closed.
Mayor Pro Tim, as I said, in the agenda is the order that would be adopted to close the street. If council approves that, we will move forward with the remaining part of the process. Next step will be to take the map, put it on the screen and get it recorded. Then we'll include that information in the order and get the order executed.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution presented.
Second.
Motion was made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Action agenda. Consider adoption of agreement with the N C D O T to relocate a water line for the Airport Road Bridge Replacement Project. T I P BP two dash R O twenty- TIP BP two dash RO twenty-seven. Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, as you stated, the Department of Transportation has a project where they're gonna make improvements to the bridge that's over the Briary Run stream located out near Academy Heights Road on Airport Road. Uh, in order to do that, they're requiring that utilities that are in conflict with the work they wanna do have to be relocated. At any place that we have utility lines, NADOT right-of-way, we are required to move them if it conflicts with what DOT needs to do to provide transportation in that right-of-way. Uh, so they approached us about this project. Uh, there are a couple of different ways we can do these things. We can try to design it and move the lines ourselves, or we can let DOT do that with their contractors and engineers they have doing their project. Uh, allowing them to do that has a couple of advantages for us. One, we aren't in the way delaying them, doing the work ahead of them. They can do it all as part of their same construction work, so it can move a little quicker. Uh, the other thing is it coordinates better for them, uh, and it keeps us from having to pay the entire cost upfront. Uh, in North Carolina, under the general statutes, DOT pays a portion of utility relocations in Tier One and Tier Two counties. Uh, so Kinston is not uh, required to pay the entire share. We only have to pay twenty-five percent of the cost. If we didn't allow DOT to do the engineering and construction, we would have to pay it all upfront and then get the money back from DOT. But we executed agreement with DOT for this project to allow them to do the engineering and do the construction work uh, with the consultants that they are using. Uh, when they did the design work and they did their bid, they came up with a construction cost and engineering cost combined at a total of a hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ten cents. The city's share of that cost will be twenty-five percent, which is forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Uh, they have provided us with the utility, uh, PE and construction agreement uh, that covers the relocation work and the cost, explains the cost shares. Uh, we need to execute that agreement in order to finalize the arrangements with them. It will have to be signed by the city manager, uh, and pre-audited by the finance director. And then after that is approved, we will come back with a budget amendment for the funds for our portion of the work. That'll come out of the Water Capital Reserve Fund. So that'll come up at a later meeting. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Uh, at this point, we are asking for approval of the agreement and to authorize the city manager, uh, or her designated, to execute the agreement and submit the documents needed.
Anything from the council?
Steve, would there be a contingency fee uh, attached to that if there's change orders in the project? Are we responsible for any of that?
There will not be any contingency fee for this work. Uh, they've actually completed this work. They kinda got the cart before the horse on this. They usually do the agreements well ahead of doing the construction. Uh, but through some issues they had on their side, they didn't get the agreement to us ahead of it. Uh, we had already authorized them to do the work, we just hadn't gotten the agreement executed. So no, there will be no contingency. The cost is set for this work on this side. Uh, I will say during construction, they ran into an issue, and they, we have two water lines on that road at the bridge. They hit the other one, which they had told us did not have to be moved. So we're working through that issue with them, but that is separate from this.
Anything further from the council? Entertainer motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item number two. Consider adoption of resolution to accept SRL funding in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three million eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars upper newse, outfall TS Debbie, emergency sewer repair. Steve Miller.
Thank you again. Uh, in April of twenty-twenty-four, the city of Kinston applied for funding for the upper new sewer rehabilitation replacement project. Uh, the full project is a project that's approximately five thousand linear feet, almost a mile uh, of the outfall that needed to be addressed. Uh, when we received the letter of intent in August of twenty-twenty-four, it was for the full cost of that entire length, uh, and the cost was six million two hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, at that same month of August of twenty-twenty-four is when Kinston got hit by Hurricane Debbie. Uh, Hurricane Debbie damaged a portion of the pipe that was supposed to be replaced in that project, uh, which required us to put in bypass pumping and do emergency repairs to restore that, that pipe. Uh, it had resulted in a sewer overflow of the river, so we really had no choice except to proceed repairing the part that had failed. Um, however, we reached out immediately. We'd already had the letter of intent, talked with the state funding agency, let them know what was going on. We kept them involved in the entire emergency repair process uh, in order to make sure that this could be something eligible to be funded under the letter of intent. Uh, and it has worked out that way. They've worked with us really close on this, uh, and they are willing to cover the cost of the emergency repair as part of the permanent repair. And what we did in the emergency was repair, was replace the entire pipe that had failed. So it was something that was gonna be done as a part of the big project anyway, so it wasn't anything extra. Um, what they are gonna do for us in order to help us even further is split the award of these funds into two parts. Uh, they are going to fund right now the emergency repairs, which we have already incurred that cost, so that we can proceed with submitting reimbursements and get that cost back right away. The remaining part of the full project will be funded at a separate award later, uh, which will be a future construction project, so we haven't had that cost yet. Otherwise, we would have to wait for the entire project to be approved before we get any money back. This will allow us to get the emergency repair money back quicker. So the amount of the acceptance agreement for the emergency repair is six hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's the full cost of the repair. Uh, the way they are doing this, that portion of the full funding um, is going to be a grant. It's a hundred percent principal forgiveness. So we will not owe any cost share or anything like that, or any loan for this emergency repair. Uh, that will come later as part of the bigger project. So attached tonight is the funding offer and acceptance agreement uh, to provide us that six hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, we'll have to have approval or adoption of the resolution to accept the funds by city council, and that'll authorize the city manager to execute and submit that agreement, as well as any documents they require to proceed with getting reimbursed. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anything from the council? Entertainer motion?
I move to adopt the resolution to accept the SRL funding in the amount of seven hundred and, six hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars for this project.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Hardy. You had said million the first time we read it. I just wanted to make sure that.
Item number three. Consider adoption on the ordinance to amend electric field verification and data collection project, E nine one thirty-seven. Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In your packet is an ordinance to amend the electric field verification and data collection project as a result of the change order in the amount of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars that was adopted by the city council, approved by the city council on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. The actual amendment is for thirty-seven thousand three hundred dollars to fund the remaining cost that they're estimating it to be. I'm happy to answer any question.
Anything from the council? All right, entertainer motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, in this year's budget, FY twenty-six budget, the council appropriated funds for a pay-in classification study. It's been almost twenty years since we've completed such a study. And I wanted to have, even though it's something that we'll do um, with the contract in-house, I did want the council to know that it was starting and to let Tiffany give you some uh, input on how the survey will take place and the additional uh, plans and things that we'll get from it.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda. Um, after thorough review and consideration of several consulting firms, uh, the department decided to move forward with the pay-in class study um, and use the MAPS group, that's the Management and Personnel Services Group. Uh, this group has worked with many municipalities in North Carolina, and they were also recommended by the North Carolina League of Municipalities, which we use for several um, things. Uh, the purpose of the study is to evaluate the city's current classification and compensation system. Um, this will ensure that it's equitable, competitive, and compliant with federal labor standards. Some of the things that they'll go through during the study um, is position evaluations. They'll do a market analysis, they'll prepare and update job descriptions, uh, review compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. They'll also create a compensation plan, um, and then help us with implementation strategies along the way. Um, the company will also help look at some of our personnel policies just to make sure we're in compliance with um, state and federal labor rules. The study is expected to begin in September or October, um, and we should have the preliminary results around January or February. Uh, we really look forward to working with the MAPS group, and we plan to keep the council informed as the project progresses along the way. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you Tiffany for that information. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Turner? Anything from the council?
I'll say something. Um, y'all, thank y'all for sticking around to the end, um, because as you all see, my point literally unfortunately got proven. We need people to stay engaged, y'all. We need people to stay engaged. And quite honestly, I'm, I'm tired of this that we're dealing with. We, as it was mentioned earlier in one of the comments, Mr. Taylor, I believe, um, this isn't the first time we've been in this situation. Um, if, if nothing changes in this community, it won't be the last time. That's why we need people to stay engaged. Um, as I, as I shared earlier in my opening remarks, I'm not gonna address the current situation because I don't wanna get sued. I'm not going in nobody's courtroom and, and be on the stand testifying and, again, spending taxpayer dollars, wasting taxpayer dollars behind some litigation because I couldn't keep my mouth shut. But what I will do is address the situation a bit more broadly. This community needs more people to show up. But not just to show up once, not just to come to a meeting and then leave before the end and we can talk about some solutions, but to work hand in hand to try to get something done. I've been doing this for over ten years now, since twenty-fourteen. I got involved in community service and, and organizing and trying to make a difference in this community in two thousand fourteen because at the time, we were having shootings on a near daily basis of young people, young black men who looked like me. My classmates, my friends, my family members were unfortunately either shooting somebody or getting shot in this community. And I was like enough is enough. People were talking about the issue. Everybody was on Facebook talking about the issue. Our elected officials were having press conferences and town hall meetings in this room talking about the issue, but nobody was engaging the young people, and we were the ones most impacted by the problem. At the same time in two thousand fourteen, there was a major uprising of social unrest across this country of young people moving up and trying to protect and, and, and build up their communities in response to the, the tragic death of, I think it was, it was, um, excuse me, Eric Garner in twenty-fourteen. Like, you know, and it was just on the heels of not too early, Trayvon Martin before that, and the, the injustice of him being murdered unjustly in Florida. And so, you know, though all these culmination of events were some of the, the, the leading issues that compelled me and my peers to get involved and start the Kinston Teens Organization, and we've been at it for ten years now. But what I've seen is that every time we have a major issue, major incident in this community, whether it's a spring of gun violence, a string of gun violence, or um, an incident involving the police, or something else that gets people upset and riled up, they'll get upset and riled up for a few days, maybe even a week or two. But once the news cycle changes, once the news feed on Facebook refreshes, and there's some new drama on social media by Sunday, people forget. We've got to stay engaged, y'all. So I, I understand that one of the concerns I've seen on Facebook, one of the ideas that has come up in the last forty-eight hours has been uh, uh, demand for a community accountability board, a citizen review board. Y'all, there is nothing new under the sun. Between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty, the city of Kinston, under some of these council's leadership and some of our existing administration in the police department, received the grant from the state of North Carolina from the Governance Crime Commission, which I was a commissioner on at the time, to support community engagement efforts in the city of Kinston between our police and our community. One of the ideas of that that came out, that was birthed from those conversations was the idea of a citizen review board, allowing the city of Kinston to have citizens, regular ordinary people, to review incidents of police, uh, if there's excessive force or use of force incidents, or any type of police disciplinary, being able to be a conduit for citizens to get engaged, review that, and help hold our officers accountable. I had, I just pulled up my emails. We were sitting here trying to go back and find email threads and just make sure I'm getting my dates and information right. So between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty, those discussions were going on. By twenty-twenty, the Kinston Police Department put out a presentation um, under leadership of, under leadership of Chief Dill Day at the time, saying that the city of Kinston does not currently have a citizen review board. However, KPD recognizes the desire for a citizen review board and supports the request. Our own police officers, our police department said they support having a board of citizens who would help hold them accountable. But what happened was, the citizens stopped showing up. People stopped coming to the meetings. People stopped getting engaged. Nobody ever made a formal presentation, said here's what we want to do, here's how to implement it. Our police department said if y'all build it, we will support it, but people stopped showing up. And that's, we can't keep doing this. We really can't keep doing this. Um, a, a few other things. I'm looking back at some of my notes from the citizen comment, and again, that's why I encourage people to stay to the end because this is the opportunity where we do get a chance to respond. Then as we walk down, we can talk one-on-one, we can show up at the next meeting, we can go to the, the, the neighborhood hub meetings that Kinston Teens holds, or the NBLA CP meetings, which I think are on, on third or fourth Tuesdays too. Like, you know, there's other forums for dialogue that we can keep this progress going, but we struggle to get people to show up. Um, you know, I think it was Ms. Blackwell who mentioned that, you know, she, she lives on Chestnut Street, is from the hood. That's her neighborhood, and nobody up here can relate with it. Now she, she, well, well, you, you could at one point, you grew up down there. I live there now. I live down the hill. I'm from down the hill, like, you know, so this is my neighborhood too, being impacted by this. I, and our police chief who's not here, but our city manager's here, and even Major Russell and some of the other majors, you know, I have conversations with them about policing in our neighborhood. It's nothing for me to call up Ms. Rhonda or our chief of police and be like, y'all, the police officer speeding on my street. I need them to slow down, or they, they in my neighborhood a little bit too much today. There's no activity going on. People don't feel comfortable with the extra stuff, like, can they get out and talk with our citizens? Can they come to the Sunday dinner we got going on and interact with people? And they'll respond, they'll show up. Like, I, I hold our officers accountable because I have that relationship, and there's nothing stopping our community members from having those relationships too. You just gotta show up. You gotta show up. And so I'm proud that there are people who are showing up tonight, who have energy and who are reading the budget apparently and then trying to piece together stuff. Stay on top of it. I'm not gonna nitpick and go through everybody's responses and stuff, but keep doing it and keep showing up and holding people accountable because that's what we need. But it can't be a one-off thing. Uh, it, it's frustrating me, it's, it's draining my spirit because I've been fighting for a lot of these issues for a long time. Like, talking about investing in housing and mental health and uh, education and recreation programs for young people. My colleagues know that that's what I talk about in our meetings. If more people showed up, they would know that's what we talk about in these meetings. Um, you know, it, it upsets me that this council hasn't invested enough in some of those other programs. I've given full presentations to this council that have not gotten invested in. But we need more people to show up and say, you know what? That's a good idea. That's what I want to see happen. We need people to follow up. I was in a meeting last night where a lady was really upset because one of these council members, one of the council member did not respond to her phone call. She said she called her and never, and this lady said that she called the council member but never got a response. And it had been a few months now, but she was still mad about it, she never got a response. I asked, did you follow up? She hadn't followed up. You can follow up with people, show up to the next meeting, call them again, send them a text message, hey, just wanna make sure you got my call. But we need that continued engagement. Rome wasn't built in a day. Kinston won't get better in a day, but we've got to work at it every single day. Um, I wasn't even, this, this past few days and weeks and stuff that's been going on here, you know, I was on such a high at the end of June because we got the All-American City Award. Like, that's a huge recognition for our community. And what I do want to say is that award doesn't mean that Kinston is perfect. We're not a perfect city, clearly, we're not a perfect city. But there are some things that we're doing right, and we're moving in the right direction for those things. And what that award, with the specific theme this year, that said that those things that we were doing in those areas, we are doing right, and other communities are looking to us. We've got to try to replicate that energy. The momentum that we've built through those projects with the downtown mural program and the neighborhood hub and Emmerweil Park and getting people engaged in that process, what that tells me is we got to try to replicate that momentum and that energy in some other areas of our community too. But we need citizens to show up and help us. We can't do it alone. I can't do it alone. I don't want to do it alone. Um, people have probably noticed that I haven't filed for reelection yet, and the filing period closes in two or three days. It, it's cuz I don't want to do this alone. So I'm very proud that there are about five or six people who filed so far. Like, more people need to get in this fight, y'all. So my encouragement, as you all leave this room today, come to the next meeting. So my encouragement, as you all leave this room today, come to the next meeting. It's first Tuesday and always. Come show up again, please, and bring somebody with you and stay to the end of the meeting so that we don't have these citizen comments and everybody get angry and frustrated, but then there's no follow-through. And then if you, you have a specific issue or concern, help us present an idea for it. Like, don't just say, I'm tired that the sky is blue and the wall is black. Well, help us get some paint and start painting to change the color. Like, you know, we've got to come up with solutions too. I've been a solution-oriented person. There are some people who've come before here with actual plans and solutions. And then as a council, we follow through on it because they presented us a plan and solution. It's a lot of work trying to manage a city of twenty thousand, nearly twenty thousand people, three hundred and something employees, a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, as you heard. There are a lot of moving parts. But if you have something you're passionate about, be the champion for that. If you want to see police accountability, be the champion for a police accountability. If you want to see streets resurfaced and improved in your neighborhood, be the champion for that. Say, I'm going to work with our public services department and let them know where the potholes are. I'm going to let them know what streets need to be redesigned as they get resurfaced. We need people to step up into leadership roles. It's hard. It's tough. It ain't, it ain't no real, a whole lot of money in it or nothing like that, but it has to be out of a love for your community. So if you love your community, my encouragement and my advice is to show up for it.
Would it be anybody else? Hey, I just want to say, piggyback on Chris just said. You know, I've been on the council now, I think, five years. And I have tried the whole town halls and nobody can question the effort I put into our youth, whether it's through the school system, through sports or whatever. Anytime I can help any organization, I'm trying to be there for them. And like he said, every time you try to put things together, bring people together to solve, come up with solutions to problems, nobody, nobody shows up. You have a town hall, you advertise it all over the city and you'll have five people show up. And, and it gets frustrating when you're doing everything in your power because you, we humans just like everybody else. We got feelings like everybody else. We, I have children. I can't speak for everybody on the council, but I got children. And I know it looks bad when things happen, but they fights that go behind everything. And, and we just can't go out and just start running our mouth about everything that's going on. We don't know ourselves. That's why they hold investigations. And I know a lot of people say, oh, well, the same people investigating themselves. But we have been outside entities and hired people to come in and do investigations. And no matter what, it seems that we try to do right. Until the people that's here, the community come together and work with us, we're never going to achieve anything. It's just not the city council. We ain't bad people. We're human beings just like everybody else. We got feelings. We bleed. We cry. So just think about that. And like Chris said, this, this is not an occupation where you're going to get rich or make any money. You're doing it out of the love of the people. And I'll just leave you with that. I want to thank the staff for all that they do. I know that y'all got a tough job too, you know, and we understand that. And like, like I said, you know, we all get beat up time after time. But we're going to stand strong till we get the job finished.
And Mr. Hardy? We got time. I got the mic. I want to say something else, take a moment of personal privilege if I can. You know, it's also important for us as community members to learn the role of council members too. Like, as I tried to explain the situation around due process and what we can and can't do. Something else, I just saw a Facebook notification pop up of somebody, you know, once again tagging the mayor. Why the mayor can't do X, Y, and Z and posted a screenshot from Chat G P T or one of these A I platforms that explained the role of the mayor, but it's not the role of the mayor in the City of Kinston and for most municipalities in North Carolina. This screenshot talks about the mayor being the chief executive officer of the city and making hiring and firing decisions and overseeing operations. That's not the role of the mayor of the City of Kinston. The mayor doesn't even have a vote on this council unless we have a tie. The five council members vote and we hire a city manager who is responsible for the hiring and firing and administration of our city employees and the implementation of the budget and the policies that the council decides on. So our role as city council members is primarily budgetary and policy. That's our role in this government structure. And so if you come with us to a concern, with a concern, even if it's about a specific employee, as I said, oftentimes we're not, at least I'm not going to get involved in the disciplinary or micromanagement or involvement with a particular employee. But what I will get involved in is policy. If you are starting to see a trend of something happening with a particular employee or a particular department or a particular realm of city services, what you can say is, well, City of Kinston, I need some help. And how can we write a policy to try to prevent this from happening again? What is the, the policy solution so that now your staff have to follow this issue? That is our role as council members. I want for people to understand that. Like, and we have had conversations and events and presentations to talk to people about that role. And, you know, last night, we had, at the East Kinston Neighborhood Meeting, I went through for about thirty minutes and broke down the breakdown of the city council, the county commission, the school board and which each government entity is responsible for. Our planning department hosts a program called Kinston One-O-One that talks about what each city department does and what the city council does. I need for more people to participate in those types of meetings and events so they know what the role is and they get mad at the right people. Like, like that, that is part of our work is making sure that people get mad at the right people. And the other thing is too, when you get that knowledge and when you know who's responsible for what, who's responsible for Vernon Avenue and who's actually responsible for Heritage Street or Blunt Street, when you know that knowledge, you share it out and speak up. We do need more people to speak up too because, let me go back and I'm going to quote this right here. Mr. Taylor said to great quote early, evil persists when good people remain silent. Good people have knowledge and when you have that knowledge and you remain silent and you don't speak up and tell somebody about it, that's not good. So when you know who's responsible for something, call them out directly and talk about that thing directly or correct the misinformation that you hear. But we can't keep letting untruths or misinformation going unaddressed in our community. We've got to speak up more when we know better. When we know better, we do better. We speak up better. So let's, let's just be informed about who's responsible for what and what's actually within their realm of authority. And with that note, I ain't going to say anything else.
If nothing further, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Need a adjourn.